Okay, good evening, everyone. It's the Brookline School Committee, March 4th, 2021. And we have a fun-packed agenda tonight. You know, some good things we're gonna do today. So I'm still stalling for just a minute, but we're gonna go ahead. I would like to do the consent agenda, and I would like to move the consent agenda. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it, but I'd also like to talk about one of the items.
Oh, right ahead, Helen.
So actually, I would, I don't know if we want to read it, but maybe summarize it. I think it's wonderful that two former students are honoring Asna Sins, who was an amazing, is an amazing, but she no longer teaches. Our teacher at the high school for years, who really gave of herself immensely to Brookline. I don't know if anybody read the piece that was...
Yeah.
Yeah. In her packet, but she, she was, you know, she, her students really loved her and she, they excelled. Along with her being willing to take kids to, you know, do trips every other year to Italy to, to look at artwork and other types of student activities. She's a Brookline resident, or was for a number of years. And then her students, her kids also went to the Brookline School. So I think it's a really special honor when, when students set up a scholarship in the name of a very beloved teacher. And I just wanted to highlight that. And Mariah, you knew Ms. Sins even.
I think this scholarship is a thousand dollars for someone in the visual arts.
Yes, definitely in the visual arts, someone who, there's all sorts of criteria for the...
It's a, it's a sizable scholarship, so.
Well, not only that, they're doing that this first year, but they're trying to set up a scholarship that will, I mean, to raise more funds to be able to have a scholarship every year at, at a much higher amount. So it's, it's really very special and quite an honor.
Yeah. Thank you. And I want to say thank you to Robin again, just publicly. That's one set of minutes with seven pages, single-spaced typed. And so they're very much in detail. So I really urge the public, if you don't want to sit through four hours and you just want to read what it is that we talked about, they are posted. And Robin really does a great job. So thank you for that, Robin. Let's take a vote and see where we are. Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer? Is Jennifer here? Not yet, I guess. Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, we are going on to our next item, which is the superintendent search. And Helen, do you want to kick that off and get us going?
I would love to. Before I, I make the motion that we have before us, and I will read the motion. I'd, I'd first like to thank the Superintendent Public Advisory Committee, Search Committee, that did an enormous amount of work, spent hours both in meetings and going over documents, and being so thoughtful and, and careful about this process. Asa was on it, and, you know, he can tell you how, how, how special it was to, to be on this and how well the group worked together. So that, that was the first piece. In addition, I'd like to thank all the community members and the teachers and administrators for attending all the sessions that we had set up for them to meet Dr. Guillory. And for all their feedback forms, which were most, almost entirely positive. So the, this, were almost entirely positive, I say, because in Brookline, we're never known to be totally unanimous on anything, I don't think. However, there was agreement on the fact that Dr. Guillory's strong interpersonal skills and his commitment to putting students first were a good fit for Brookline. In addition, I, I want the school committee to know that I have done due diligence with regards to reference checks on Dr. Guillory, both by calling his listed references of superintendents that he's worked for and under. And also, we had a virtual visit. Ms. Spedischfield and Mr. Russo, myself, met with principals, administrators, and school committee members in Lowell to, to get feedback. I was impressed. There were probably, I don't know, fifteen principals, Suzanne would you say?
Oh, yes.
Maybe more. I think there may have been more. There are thirty-two altogether. And they, they apologized for their colleagues who's, we're, we're sorry that they couldn't come and talk with us. Their main comment was Lowell's loss is Brookline's gain. But in addition, all of the references, whether it was the virtual visit... Peer School. And, and the high school. The words that have been used to describe him are professional, always available, compassionate, truly cares about kids, calm, personable, excellent listener, and thought partner. Best leader. This was expressed by a principal with many years in the system. And in some, the sentiment in Lowell, as I said before, was Brookline's gain is Lowell's loss. So I, I guess what I would like to do is put the motion on the table and then we can have a discussion. Is that...
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the way to do it. Yeah.
So it's my pleasure to make the motion to appoint Dr. Linus Guillory to the position of superintendent of Public Schools of Brookline, conditioned upon the successful negotiation of a mutual, I wrote the word wrong, sorry. The successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment approved by and signed by both parties, the superintendent and the school committee.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Dimitri. So why don't we take a few minutes if there are comments or questions or anything that you'd like to say? Any committee members? Or any of the principals who might have met him? Susan?
I'm happy to say a couple of things. It's a fantastic, fantastic pick. I think that one of the things that was so impressive to me was how, how quickly he could sort of speak in Brookline language about a wide, wide variety of issues, even with very limited background knowledge. And, but just his range of experience is so impressive that really, I think he'll be a tremendous asset to, to the district, to the students, to the families, to the educators. And just, I think, I think we are very lucky to have him. I will also note that after having moderated the parent panel with some hundred and fifty-plus parents along with Mariah, I was getting an influx of text messages from people who sometimes have not been involved in the town for quite some time. Veterans of override campaigns from ten years ago were texting me saying, "He seems great." You know, "Is he gonna make it through?" So I just, people who just didn't know the process and didn't really have a lot of context really were just so impressed in a very short period of time. So delightful. And thank you, Helen, for running the process, and thank you to our incredible search committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Andy?
Yes, after our public interview on Monday, I heard from an educator who was impressed with Dr. Guillory's description of himself as a systems thinker. And I kind of agree with that. Like, I think that someone needs to get down to the root causes of some of our discontents and put systems in place to address those root causes. And I think that plus some stability is what we need now to unlock the, the energy in this town. So I'm really happy to support Dr. Guillory for this position, and I'm looking forward to serving with him.
Mariah?
Thanks, Suzanne. I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Andy said, which is, Dr. Guillory will be, I think, an amazing presence in our community. But one person doesn't make a school system. One person can't do it all. And it's not just the school committee or the staff. It comes from the parents in the community also. I think we've had a lot of angst, I guess is the word I'll use to summarize the past couple of years. But it, but it's time, if we're going to really have a, I think, a, a stronger start as we come with Dr. Guillory, we also need to think about how we turn the page on a lot of, a lot of what has happened and really give him and all of us our best opportunity moving forward.
Thank you, Mariah. Barbara? And then Dimitri? Whoops, Barbara, did we lose you?
Yeah, she hit the note, but...
Okay.
Now I'm unmuted. I was very, very pleased with the fact that he seemed, he seemed so at ease when he was talking about being in schools and in classrooms. This is a person who seems to be an educator right from the ground up. And I think we have been lucky to have many superintendents, but not all who have been that. And I very much look forward to seeing him become acquainted with the Brookline schools and the teachers. I think he will have a very good relationship with them and will enjoy being here. So I think we're very lucky to have found him.
Thank you, Barbara. Dimitri?
Thank you, Suzanne. I wanted to say, this was my first time serving in Brookline in this role on the search committee. And early on, when we were sort of trying to create a timeline, Helen was hoping that we would have somebody ready by March. And I sort of said, Helen, I don't think this is gonna be realistic. I wanted an April to like May deadline. So kudos to you, Helen. You've led, you know, I've served on other committees, but never in Brookline. This was the most efficient, well-run process that I've been part of, and I truly enjoyed it. I really loved the opportunity to be in conversation with the educators in Brookline, who were part of the committee, and the principals who contributed to the conversation. But I think I walk away most touched by the parents who were part of the committee, who worked, just gave so much to the conversations, to what we needed. And, and I appreciated the honest dialogue that the committee had. There were tensions. But we did it in such a spirit of working and honesty about process and what we were doing. And I think it really led to an impressive conclusion in Dr. Guillory. I'm excited about him for the district. And I think, I'm hoping he's gonna bring us some kind of stability so we can begin to focus on, you know, I think the, a lot of the work that we want to do and want to help with the community. So thank you, Helen. Thank you to everyone who participated in the committee.
Thank you, Dimitri. I just want to say I enjoyed being on the committee, so thank you, Helen. I enjoyed working both with our educators, our administrators, our families, our parents, as you mentioned, Dimitri. It was a well-run subcommittee and advisory committee, and I, I think we did the work. I'm very excited to welcome Dr. Guillory. I'm certainly going to support him. I think it's gonna be effective seven, one, twenty-two July.
Thank you. I was gonna modify my motion, but thank you. Exactly. Let's put that in.
And I, I want the public to know that the school committee is meeting, having a workshop on, I believe it's March eighteenth. And one of the, our goals is really to, to pull ourselves together, get, get focused on our goals and what our vision is so that we can share that with Dr. Guillory and work together with him. We're absolutely, I believe we're absolutely committed, I certainly am, to making this a successful tenure for him. And we hope for many years. So I'm very excited about this. So Jennifer, you made it. Jennifer Monopoly, that's good. Yay, because we're just about to vote. Did you want to say anything, Jennifer, before we took the vote?
No, I am. I'm just excited about the future. That, that's my comment. I'm super excited about the future. So that, that is the sum of my feelings about this.
Thank you. Anybody else that wanted to say anything? David?
I, I also want to echo what others have said. I'm very optimistic for the future. I think this is an, that Dr. Guillory is an excellent choice. I was very impressed by the breadth of his experience and the wealth of knowledge that he brings from his previous stops and from other positions. He's really made a meteoric rise through the ranks of education, and that's a testament to the successes that he's had and to the relationships that he's built. I'm quite confident that he's going to be able to do the same here. But like Mariah said, we do need to, as a community, offer our support to Dr. Guillory to make that successful. Because one individual can't effectuate change alone. So hopefully, in that spirit of collaboration, we'll move forward together and continue to progress.
It takes a village, all of us together.
Or town, in this case, but yeah.
Village is all right.
So I think we'll take the vote. So Helen?
Yes.
Susan? Yes, I got you. Dimitri?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So welcome to Dr. Guillory. Unanimous. And Helen may be heading out for just a minute to give him a phone call.
I'm going to give him a call now.
Well, he may be watching. I'm not sure. He may.
But I still would like...
No, you need to do that. Thank you, Helen. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work, for your attendance at the different meetings that we've had and the kind of meet and greet sessions. So thank you for that. Okay, Jim, we are gonna turn it over to you. Are you ready?
I'm ready. Well, thank you. I, I first want to add my congratulations to Dr. Guillory. I too had an opportunity to meet with him and spend some time with him, and he's all of what everyone has reported and more. I found him very easy to talk with. He's, he, and he is very comfortable, and he is very knowledgeable. And his personal skills, interpersonal skills are outstanding, absolutely outstanding. I think he will be a great leader for Brookline, a terrific person to add to this community. He has depth and breadth. He has experience, but he has, he has heart. When you talk with him, you get a sense that this is a real person who's gonna bring a, a spirit of joy about learning, but also a belief in the human spirit. He, he, it palpitates out of him. And I found myself gravitating to him and saying, "Brookline's in good hands." And I agree with the other comments. It, it, it takes more than one person, and surrounding him with support so that he can lead the district in a way that reflects his values outstanding. So it bodes well for Brookline and, and for the future. So if you're listening, Dr. Guillory, congratulations. That's great. Okay, so then there were some other things I, I'd like to just quickly report on. This is the first week where first graders came back. They entered the schools. It was terrific. I had the opportunity on Monday morning to be in the Runcle School with Donna, who took me around. And when you go around with Donna, you better run because she takes you all over the place. And here we go. We go into the first grade classes, and these little guys were terrific. Two first graders came to Donna's office to invite her to come to some performance of what they were, they were doing, and they weren't able to. So we asked, "How, how was it returning to school?" And they were very articulate about how much they liked seeing friends that were in the other cohort, and now they can be together. But then one girl confided, and she says, "Well, I will say, it, it, it was a little more noisy than it usually is." Because these kids must have been buzzing all over the place, talking with each other. Anyway, that was fun. First graders are back, and that seems to be going really, really, really well. I also want to just reflect on an experience that I had last Friday at the Florida Ruffin Ridley School. Jen Bullock did a great, terrific job with the renaming ceremony. And, and listening to the speakers gave me a deeper appreciation for the, the challenge of what it was like to change the name of a school. That, that is a huge event. As I've said before, changing the name of a sports team ends up being, you know, a major, you know, conflict in a town. Changing the name of a school is really emotional, difficult, and it forces you to go to answer the question, "Why?" Well, I have to tell you. They, Jen arranged for four students who are part of this Be Leavers Committee, as, as, as you know. And they spoke with such passion. Now, these are, these are young kids, really. When the oldest, I think, was a freshman, maybe a sophomore in high school. And when they began this, this process, and they spoke about what Brookline stands for, what they believe, what the future is. What does it mean when you go into a school? A school is supposed to be a place of future. It's supposed to be a place of opportunities, supposed to be a place where all people can succeed, a place where they are nurtured and encouraged. And all their inclinations and talents are seeded and grown by, by their teachers, and their teachers believe in them. And here we have a school who was named for a person who didn't reflect all those values. They spoke eloquently about that and what it took to make that change and what they learned from it. I, I think it was a life-altering experience for these students. And they actually said, "You have not heard the last of us. So buckle up, everybody. You have not heard the last of these students." They have, they have made their mark in a way that is really indelible. It came from the school, it's the values of this community, where the voices of students matter. And if you, if you give them the opportunity to rise to the occasion, they rise. And that's what these students did, eloquently, eloquently. And, and also, I, I always do this to Susan, and I can't help it, but Susan Wolf-Ditkoff, if you haven't seen, if you were not able to participate or observe this ceremony, I encourage you to watch the tape. Listen to the students. Listen to Susan Wolf-Ditkoff. Listen to the two founders who actually started this with the petition to town. And listen to the, what, what they had to talk about and how, how emotional, how meaningful, how purposeful this whole thing was. This wasn't just naming a school. A society is remembered and known by the monuments it builds. And this is now a monument to justice, to equality, to education, but to a sense of community in, in about as profound a way as you can get. And then, of course, enough to Tommy Vitolo after our state rep and said to him, "Tommy, these young men and women are headed for something big. You need to get them into the State House with you now. You need them on your team." So he was laughing, but only half in jest because the, these, these kids are outstanding. So Jen Bull, I know you're here today, so thank you. You did a great job. And I think the community is very proud of what's happened that last Friday, but through all of what happened. So that, that's great. So I'm gonna segue over to, you know, the, we, we're actually a little ahead of the commissioner. The commissioner has, has indicated he's gonna be asking schools K to five to return full-time by April. And interestingly enough, Brookline had begun that process a little before the commissioner. And we have the K eight principals here this evening who are gonna present on the work they have done. And I have to tell you, for everybody that's listening, I work with administrators across the state. And, and look at me, I've done it for a lot of years, for a lot of years with, with a lot of principals. And this group of principals, I put this group of principals against any group of principals in the state, anywhere, anytime. This is a group that's dedicated. They work hard. They know what they're doing. They're enlightened. They have a vision of what their schools ought to be. And they, 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 they live out their values every single day to make life better for students. It, it, to do so means they're working twenty-four-seven. Make no mistake about it. Something happens on the school, could be any day of the night, any, any day of the week, any time of the night, any day of the week. They are there, and they, they rise to the occasion. They, they make it happen. They push me on occasion appropriately. But they believe in Brookline, and they believe in this community, and they believe in students. So we're gonna hear tonight about the work that they have been doing to return grades K to five into the schools, and then they'll touch on grade six to eight. But I, I, I could not be more proud and pleased to be working with a group of educators who are really distinctive here in, in Brookline. So with that, let me flip it over to, who's gonna start it off? Who's gonna start us off? Looks like Helen wants to say something.
I just want to ask a, a favor. If, if the principals could just talk a little bit about how first grade is going.
Oh.
When, when do you have your chance to talk? That would be really nice.
Well, so should we do that first? Who, who's gonna begin the presentation?
I think, I think I begin the presentation. I just don't know who's putting up the slides.
Robin, can I have sharing rights, please?
Okay, but we're gonna get into this presentation, and then we're gonna get into that a hundred percent. So let's take a few minutes. How did first grade go?
Great.
Why doesn't somebody give us a little bit of a narrative in terms of...
Yeah, I, I'm happy to jump in. This is, I'm happy to jump in. I mean, it went really super well. I mean, one of my favorite moments was a kid going up to another kid in the hallway and saying, kind of on that first day, "Do you know what this means? We get to see each other every single day, except Saturday and Sunday." And it was just really mind-blowing. I, I think that the team at Heath, I know, was super activated behind the scenes. Our custodians were super activated, our teachers, teachers who never thought they'd be moving classrooms in the middle of February. You know, it was very difficult lifting, and they, they did it. And the end result is that, you know, our kids are really super happy, and the classrooms are beautiful, and the learning feels really, or is starting to feel really organic, not strange or stilted. Because it is difficult. This has been a long week and an exhausting week. Because once again, we've radically had another first day of school, and then a radical reintegration of new practices or old practices that are new again. So it's been really exhausting. But the teachers have really reported day after day how, you know, how it really is refreshing and wonderful, and the kids just look and feel amazing. It's great to have them back.
Yeah. Hi, this is Monica from the Lawrence School. I would echo everything that Asa said. And in addition, I would say there's real strength and beauty in having the whole class come together as a learning community. Here, they've been divided for almost seven months, and things have gone very well. But bringing everybody together, all those children and the teacher and the paraprofessionals and the special educators, all the adults that service those children in the rooms, it's, it's somewhat magical. And you can feel that through the kids. You can feel that through the staff. So it's been a really wonderful week. Like Asa said, it's been a long week, and there was a lot of preparation and careful thought and planning that went into this. And I feel that's why we executed a really good week. So yeah, I'm thrilled about it. And we'll continue to, you know, learn from the experiences that we have from bringing the first grade in as we bring in grade two through five and eventually grades six through eight. Go ahead, Jim.
No, you go first.
Okay. This is Leslie from the peer school. And again, I'll second what Asa and Monica said. But it was really a joy to see just how happy the children were. As they waited outside on the first day, it was really sweet. I saw two kids from different cohorts see each other, and one put out his arms to hug the other, and the other offered an elbow, and he's like, "Oh, yeah." And they elbow bumped. And, you know, I'm just, I, I can't be more proud of the students for making the transition and the educators. And one of the things that I was just thrilled with was to see everything go so well and so smoothly. And I'm really hoping that the educators are really taking joy in the fruits of their labor. They worked incredibly hard to make this happen, and it was a huge payoff. So just really thrilled all the way around, and it's been really... Um, and it was a huge payoff. So just really thrilled all the way around and it's been really successful.
So I can jump in Jen from Ruffin Ridley and echo everything that my colleagues had said before. We know it's been a really good week so far because we're sending home some super tired uh, little kiddos home to school. They are definitely exhausted and that's a good thing because they are working really hard, just as their teachers and our support staff. And I think what, you know, it's been joyful seeing them and having them fill our halls with all of the noise and joy of learning. Um, but the other really amazing thing that happened at our schools, I'm sure as it happened in other schools was just not only our first grade team, but it was like a, a whole school rally effort to move those classrooms to, you know, have teachers who work in different grade levels. Say, you know, I know this is a hard time for you, so I'm going to come in and help you because I know you'll help me when I need, you know, when it's my turn. And so I was, I was so proud of our entire community for really rallying, even our families getting behind our teachers and offering support. Um, you know, whether it was volunteering or purchasing materials or things that they needed to make the organization a little bit easier for them. Um, it was really a community effort and I, I felt so proud and, and, and happy to be able to be a part of that community.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I, I have to say, um, again, I echo what my colleagues have already reported. Uh, that it has been really a special moment just welcoming our first graders all back together. It's just nice to walk into their classrooms and to see uh, what a warm feeling it is to see them as a full class. Uh, our, our staff are, uh, were amazing in welcoming them back to um, the school as a full group and very excited to have them all back together. Uh, really felt like a, you know, real class and um, really nice community. It was just a really nice feeling. Um, yeah, it was great. I even walked into the art room and saw a full art room full of first graders too. And that was just really special. So all around, I just felt our staff did a great job while welcoming our students. Uh, my favorite moment was Monday morning when I uh, do welcome students in the, in the, in the morning near a blacktop and I saw a first grade parent walk by on a blacktop raising their arms just with excitement. And it's just such a nice feeling that they're back. So it was just a really nice, really nice week.
Great. Great. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. Those, those are great, great stories. I love the way you talk about how the staff was feeling uh, so good about welcoming the students back as well. That, that's, that's great. All right, Donna, are you ready?
Michelle, do you have the slide? So just on behalf of all of my principal colleagues, we just want to thank the school committee for allowing us this time to share um, our excitement and some of the obstacles that we're encountering and trying to bring back the next group of students. We were all at Monco. Looking back, when we were writing the letters to the parents on Friday with the first grade teachers, it was really emotional. So I have to say my three first grade teachers could not have been more at all numbers. So there was no moving. It looks very different and how it's not the same for the building. For everybody, but we, we really do feel so that's great news. Patient is about opportunities and things that we will encounter. The objective is that returning students to a five day week fully in-person instruction allows for all of us. And we just want to be clear that we plan to have this be five days of school with still the Wednesday being a half a day. And all the other days will be eight to 2:30. Um, we would like to eliminate the complexities inherent in the work of reopening schools to all second and fifth grade students. By the start of the systems at play in these school-based processes.
All right. Um, and I had two words about first grade being in. I didn't speak about Baker. Um, the two words are absolutely wonderful. Um, that's you know, soon as possible and we're ready for that. So um, bringing all students in is, is, it's obviously going to be good because we need students to be in school. Um, they need to be in our care. Oh, um, young humans need that. Also, P's, uh, some of them are not in five days a week. Bringing all kids back in would give kids who are English learners and I P's. Just got to talk about mental health needs, you know, by having all kids in, we can better focus on those needs for all students. Students. We're schools, we focus on academics. We also got to remember we are in are all here uh, in school so we can let them be young humans, let them thrive. Routine. And by having kids in a daily basis, we'll give that content, we think humans need that, young humans need that. They need that routine that will, that being in school every day will give them. And me personally, oh.
For the planning. Um, and it is a lot of behind the scenes work and very careful behind the scenes work, very collaborative behind the scenes work, but it, the, our priorities really are to prioritize the health and safety of our students, our staff and our families. Um, that is not negotiable in all of this. And so at every step, we're really looking at how do we reemphasize our health and safety measures? How do we for mask wearing and communicating those simple things that have kept us all safe for so long and really just reemphasizing constantly. I know it we're really, really keep that really at the fore our experience and peer cohorts for all students regardless. Like we're experience has um, kind of a consistent tone, a consistent, a consistency. So that um, no matter what's happening or where they're at in their learning model, um, they're feeling supported. Um, bringing back students back to school in person as classrooms and buildings are certified to allow for safe learning environments. Again, that goes back to health and safety standards, making sure um, that the buildings are ready, ready to go. And they seem to be doing, being quite healthy these days. Prioritize, of course, the youngest and most vulnerable learners first, our K and one. Very healthy and happy in school. Now let's look at two, three, four and up, right? And then simplestly choices that students and families need to make and make that reentry process seamless for them. And that's less about the learning platforms, I think, but more about what are the nuts and bolts of how to access schools? What do the school grounds look like? Where do we line up in the morning? Um, what are, you know, the new doors? Where are the classrooms now? What's communication like? And that communication also needs to be streamlined, transparent um, and consistent, right? Reliable communication. And that's something that we're dedicated to. And then to put social motion. Um, we have found, I think, of loneliness, a sense of longing. And present, we need to recognize that it is a school system. We've been pretty good at working with those those um, since school for a long time. I'm to grow in that way so that the reentry process, which is so well managed on the backend. So it was almost magical. Like this is just happened. Staff were doing all the labor behind the scene. So those are our guiding principles as we begin to
about some students back to the building, two through five, and then eventually six to eight. Um, some of the things that we're looking at is uh, what lunch would be in each of our with increased numbers of of students. Into the cafeteria, six feet of just making that a, a high consideration um, for that period of time. Um, also what we're looking at is right now, uh, we have some lack of adequate traditional spaces that we've used in the past are now being used for other classes. So, so right now, um, we're uh, our conservatory classes given our spaces and our and also there's also an increased need to cross things. Uh, students who are Yale services, special ed services, uh, math and literacy intervention will be taking place in uh, spaces where we need to potentially mix students uh, in, in order to uh, for them to receive their services. Um, and also uh, given that we have to, when we bring back uh, middle school students, uh, our students uh, who take world language or in uh, different sections will need to cross cohort in order to have a world language. And the same thing goes for conservatories. So these are some of the considerations that we're taking in uh, as we try to figure out how to bring back students and bring them back safely.
Right. And, and as we're increasing students inside the building, we have to think of all the other places where we're increasing them as well. Oh, Michelle, there you go. Um, so one of the places too, as we're, we're thinking about adding more and more students, we also have to think about the student ridership on all of our buses and our vans that we use for transportation. That's also going to increase. So we want to make sure that we're paying attention to the mitigation efforts that we have in those spaces and making sure that they are adequate in keeping our students and the staff that ride those um, vehicles safe. Um, and then also thinking about, you know, in the, in the virtual world, a lot of different services can cross, can pull kids across different cohorts um, to deliver the different services such as Yale and special education. And it's possible that when we bring everybody back, um, we might not be able to cross cohort in that way. Um, and so we might have to resection some of the students in order to make sure that they can receive all of their services safely.
Okay, um, I'd like to talk about um, the staffing and scheduling aspect of the work of bringing more students into the building. Um, I'm going to present some of the challenges um, that are complex, but certainly not insurmountable. So these are the things that we are thinking about on a daily basis. Um, so first, this has just been a reoccurring um, challenge and that is sub-coverage. Um, when we have teachers that have uh, that get ill um, or possibly need to take a leave for a particular reason, maybe they're quarantining. Um, and we also have some teachers that have been able to teach remotely, um, that now need to come into the building. And so thinking about um, how we make sure that all the classes are covered and covered appropriately. And so again, this is not new. Um, as we're bringing back uh, students in grades two to five, but certainly something that we're thinking about. Um, the other piece, um, which I think is um, one of the big pieces is thinking about scheduling. Um, so anyone who has ever done scheduling for a school knows that it's an incredibly complex task. Um, there's many constraints that we need to think about when we're building a school schedule and certainly in the times of COVID, there are more constraints than before. Um, a K to eight school also has um, various constraints, just as we think about what's developmentally appropriate and needed for our youngest learners as well as our eighth graders. And so one of, I think, the biggest issues that we are thinking about and working on now collaboratively um, is shared staff. So many of us have shared staff that are shared um, between schools. Um, so for instance, at Pierce, we share about seven staff members um, with uh, one of the K to eights having 11 staff that shared um, between their school and other K to eights. So as we're making changes to our schedules, we need to be cognizant of how that impacts another school. Um, and we need to negotiate and make sure that the changes that we're making um, will work um, as we implement um, those staffing changes. Another issue we're thinking about is safely covering classes. So while um, health and safety is a priority overall, certainly during unmasked times, we want to be um, very thoughtful. And so thinking about lunch, recess, mask breaks um, is really critical. And so this means thinking about the various mitigation strategies that we can put into place. Um, it was wonderful. We had members of panel four visit Pierce today. And so we had a chance to look at um, some possible barriers that we can use on desks and on tables as children are eating. So that's an additional mitigation strategy. Um, but also thinking about staff that are currently covering those unmasked times, um, working to make it so uh, especially as we have more children in a classroom, possibly making staffing shifts so that they are not um, with un, more unmasked students um, than we'd like. Um, in terms of the virus, I think that um, when we have a, have a positive case in a school, the first thing that we do is begin contact tracing. And so uh, this is a process that needs to be efficient. It needs to be effective. Um, and our, I want to shout out all our nurses and our nursing teams as they do this uh, into the evening, they do this on the weekends. Um, and so thinking about as we bring more children back and possibly um, within six feet um, of one another, what that means for contact tracing, that we'll be doing um, more contact tracing than before. Should we have a positive case? And so we want to be thoughtful, given that that work needs to happen very quickly. And again, it needs to be efficient. Um, we want to make sure that we can do that with the same staff that we currently have. Um, but with the addition of more students. Uh, the next piece, uh, shout out, we're all really excited that teachers and educators are now on uh, the priority vaccination list. So we are very excited about that. Um, but we are thinking about, not a but, and we are thinking about what that means in terms of covering classes as teachers get their vaccination appointments. So we want our um, educators to take the very first appointment we can get. We imagine that that could be sometime during the school day. They can't all happen during the weekend or after school hours. So we want to make sure that we have the coverage to allow them to take the first available, available appointment as well as be prepared, um, should any of our educators uh, have a, a physical uh, response uh, to the vaccine that would require them to be out of school. So again, that really has to do with having appropriate substitute coverage um, and being planful. And then lastly, one of the things um, that we've been thinking about um, as well as I'm sure Matt Gillis and his team are thinking about is just how uh, food service needs to change. So currently the model we're using is that we have three schools that prepare food um, for the other K to eights and that food is delivered to school. So right now Pierce, Ridley School and Heath have opened full-service kitchens. Um, the cafeteria staff work to prepare meals there and then they're delivered. So for instance, Pierce delivers to Lawrence and to St. Mary's, Ridley to Driscoll and Lincoln, Heath to Runcle, Baker and Beeb. Um, and then in those sites that don't have a full working kitchen, there is a person there to distribute food. And so this will need to change as we welcome more students back and we need to make sure that lunches are prepared in a timely way um, that meets our schedule needs uh, during the day. So thinking about what that means in terms of staffing changes um, so that we can get that done.
Thanks. Um, I'm going to talk through some of our uh, facilities and space considerations as we bring, look towards bringing back second through fifth grade and then eventually uh, six and up. Um, and these are issues that we uh, had been grappling with the last few weeks as we prepared to bring our first graders back. Um, finding spaces for uh, small group instruction, whether that be special education, uh, EL support intervention. Um, that has proven to be a challenge already as we've had our, our first graders back. Um, folks who could previously run a small group of two or three in a, in a very small office. Uh, now in order to be appropriately distanced are needing some different spaces. Uh, and so trying to figure out where to do that uh, safely and appropriately uh, has been uh, has been one of the challenges to work out for first grade and then being uh, mindful of how we'll do that for uh, older students as we go forward. Uh, that also touches scheduling. Um, it's been the case that in, for many of our service providers and either, like I said, EL or special education or intervention, they're able to see a mix of students. they're able to see a mix of students, some of whom are in front of them and some of whom are remote. And now those students will need to be brought together. And so finding spaces, potentially reshuffling schedules or reshuffling class placements is a consideration we're making. Figuring out, we've talked, you've heard us say unmasked a lot so far, right? And I think figuring out our unmasked times, one of those are eating, mask breaks, snack breaks, is probably one of the bigger challenges we're, we're trying to sort through. When they're, you know, surely the hope is that by March 29th and forward, we can be outside as much as we can, but you know, I know it'll be the case, we'll have a rainy day, or last year in April, we had a, we had a snowstorm. And so if that were to occur, we need to figure out how can we safely have folks eating and snacking and taking mass breaks inside. One of the avenues for that would be, you know, we've talked, we've talked with Matt Gillis and other folks about the potential for barriers, either for our cafeteria seating or for our classroom spaces, if kids have to be at less than six feet for eating. Our out management of our outdoor spaces, so when we can get outside for, for lunch and recess is a real challenge. Insofar as like right now, at Lincoln, we're 25 sections, between 11 o'clock and 1 o'clock. All 25 sections of our building are trying to find a space for lunch. Some of them for recess and some grades, that's when they're having a, you know, a mass break. And so we are already in hybrid, using nearly every inch of, of that outdoor space. And so we can, there's a little bit more room for, you know, oh, the field's a little bit wet, can you scoot over a little bit right now? While we're in hybrid, we're needing to be much more specific and deliberate about our timing and our how we allocate that space as we look towards bringing back more students. As we think about our classroom sizes, right, and the furniture needs and the number of students and the square footage in classroom spaces, we're mindful that in some of our classes, it may in fact continue to be possible to keep students at six feet of distance during learning. Whereas in others, by nature, you know, due to the size of the cohort or due to the square footage of the classroom, we may be looking at somewhere, you know, closer to three and a half or three feet. That has implications then for classrooms that require additional adult support for push-in support from either our paraprofessionals, from special educators, from related service providers. So being mindful of which classrooms are those that will be particularly tight and what are the scheduling considerations we need to make for, for push-in support there. We have on here this, this point about student transitions with full classes. We mentioned specifically like cubbies and lockers. But there are implications for, for a lot of our transitions in terms of, you know, unit, you know, having one way, you know, one upstairs case and one downstairs case, how we enter and, and exit the building, how we stagger our arrival and dismissal, and then also just the, the management of of students needing to pop out to, you know, to grab coats and other materials to head outside. This has been a delicate dance in hybrid. And so we're thinking through the timing and the location of how we can do this most safely as we transition more students into the building. Moving and removing of furniture, this, you know, in some, some buildings have varying degrees of, of storage space still available. Currently at Lincoln, our, you know, our, our basement space that was formerly the computer lab has a lot of, has a lot of old furniture, has a lot of furniture that's being unused this year, where we're making space in our classrooms for students at appropriate distancing. And I just, I would be remiss if I didn't shout out our custodial staff at Lincoln, and I'm confident across the district, who are kind of the first domino that needs to fall in ensuring then that teachers can move around and set up classrooms the way they need to. To welcome back our first graders this week, many of us were swapping classrooms or creating classrooms in spaces that formerly weren't classrooms. And the first thing that needed to happen was some incredible work on the part of our custodial staff to move out furniture, to move in new furniture, to move furniture from, from one space to another. And so we're, we're mindful that we need to, as we steer towards opening later this month for two through five, have a staggered and thoughtful plan for how those moves can happen. I didn't jump in at the, at the outset, but I would say, you know, first grade this week has been super successful. It was a, it was a party-like atmosphere at arrival on Monday. And the kids are, as my colleagues have said, going home tired and happy every day. And a big part of the success we've had, I think, is due to the thoughtful planning we had in, in setting ourselves up for this week in terms of the spaces, in terms of the routines, and in terms of being ready. You know, being ready to welcome our students and staff in the, in the safe way that they deserve. I think if we are, if our planning is tight, if our planning is set and we're not figuring things out towards the end, folks feel comfortable, folks feel safe in the ultimate experience then for, for our kids is the thing we want it to be. So again, there's, there's facilities and space considerations. Some of them are a lot of forethought, right? Some of them are things we're going to be working through before students get there. And then some of them are things that will be kind of learning on the fly a little bit in terms of, you know, class hallway spaces, outdoor spaces.
So just to segue from Brian, I do feel like opening up kindergarten and then opening up first grade, these really have been the warm-up acts. Because first grade was a quarter of what's coming in about three and a half weeks or so. And so we're really looking at, okay, how do we take what we learned from that implementation and really turn it and, you know, scale it to a much bigger size? So I think that's what makes me nervous, like, okay, how do I do this to a different scale? But I'm, again, I reiterate the confidence in my team. One of the things that makes me feel confident or gives me some, something to lean into is knowing the myriad complex conversations happening at many levels. We meet weekly, of course, as a leadership team with Dr. Marini, Michelle, Casey, et cetera. The whole central office team, Mary Ellen, and we, we sit down and we really talk about, okay, what's coming up? What are our plans? What are our needs? And so that, that kind of planning is always happening. And I just want to illuminate that, that it's always happening. Of course, the school committee and the BEU, those, those conversations are constantly happening, which is really a critical component of the communication that's happening, the collaborative communication. I think Panel Four, the members of Panel Four have been, contributed greatly to this conversation, have shown a willingness to work with us. We're having visitors, I believe, next week come to the schools to really look at the schools in action. As we begin this next phase of reopening, which feels really, really important to get that expert lens. Of course, the facilities team will be there, that expert lens and kind of bringing everybody together and finding the intersections in those, those, those intersections are where the real work, I think, is happening. It's when you really are siloed that everything falls apart, but looking for those intersections. I can speak personally that for me, listening closely to families and connecting with families and being really transparent with families at the Heath School, and I know that this is the guiding principle for the other principals in Brookline, but that family, school family connection is so critical to understand where you at, what are your questions, how are you feeling, and then to create systems and communication kind of flow that helps people really understand the bare necessities of what's going to be happening. So that people feel comforted and confident, but also feel heard and respected. I know that at Heath, we're having a lot of, you know, leadership staff really breaking down kind of the hierarchy and really thinking about what are our roles, how do they all contribute to the greater good in this really critical time? I'm meeting regularly, and I know all principals are meeting regularly or establishing regular meeting times with our BEU reps and our health and safety teams so that we can all make sure that we're having those complex conversations. So that we're meeting the ethical and moral mandates and also the legal mandates of what we need to be doing as school leaders to protect our staff and to support our staff, but also to be adhering to the mandates that are coming down and, you know, kind of engulfing us all from both the state and from our own school committee. And so at Heath, just this past week, I can only share my experience because it's the only one I know. But what we talked about this at our past faculty meeting was talking about what we're looking forward to. And one of the things that I recognize what is that people are looking forward to so many things without seeing students all at once, but the things that they're willing to let go, you know, having a half a class in a Zoom and the other class, class in person, people are really ready to let that stuff go. So that's important to see what we're looking forward to, what we're ready to let go of. What are the health and safety concerns? What are our material needs? How many desks? What size? What are our psychic needs, right? What do we need to have so that we feel good about the transition? Logistical needs and more. And again, I find myself in the role of kind of sitting again at this, all of these intersections, really listening very carefully and really seeking out answers as quickly as possible so that we can then move forward together. But they're complex conversations, but if they're not collaborative, then this will not be successful, in my opinion.
So, good evening. I'm going to close up with the last slide. And before I begin, I, I just want to take a moment to publicly thank and acknowledge my principal colleagues. I've been in education now for 31 years, and there is not a group of principals that I would rather work with in the good days and the hard days and the bad days than all the people that are on this call. And for that, I am extremely grateful. I mean that from the bottom of my heart because this job is just too hard. So to be able to have colleagues like that that I can rely on really means a lot to me, and I think means a lot to the public schools of Brookline. So you've just heard a fair amount of the work and effort and planning and logistics that has to go into bringing back all of our students in grades two through five. And we do that because we want them back. We want them back as fast as we can, but we want to make sure we're doing it as safely as we can. And while we are planning to bring back grades two through five, and we have just welcomed in grade one this past week, we're also thinking about grades six through eight while we're running our schools every day. And I think many of you who know me understand that I love my kindergarten and first grade students, but I have a special place in my heart for the sixth through eighth graders as I was a middle school teacher for 18 years. And I can't wait to have them back. I miss, I miss their sass. I miss their interactions. I miss their personalities. I miss their passion. We really want to get our sixth through eighth graders back as quickly as we can, and we are currently working on that currently as we're trying to figure out the best way to bring back our second through fifth graders. But you know, as the, as the saying goes, bigger kids, bigger problems, right? So when you think about the sixth through eighth graders, you have to remember that even though we are what we call elementary schools and we have grades K through eight, we really are running essentially elementary schools and middle schools at the same time. And they're really two different animals. They're two different animals as they should be. They, they have to follow two different sets of schedules. They follow different meeting patterns. They have different logistics over the course of the day. So even though there are many of the same considerations, many of the same hurdles that we are trying to get over and will get over before we bring back grades two through five, we are working on the same set of conditions for students in grades six through eight. I want to share that in the past couple of years, we've worked really hard across the district and at the Lawrence School to really learn and receive PD about how to be a trauma-sensitive school. And the three most critical components of being a trauma-sensitive school is that we're always paying close attention to safety, predictability, and control. And we want to make sure that when we wrap up, when we bring back all of our children, they feel safe. They have a sense of predictability, that they know what their schedule is going to look like, what their day is going to look like, what their teacher is going to do, and that they have some level of control. And that's important in any year, but during this pandemic, and now that we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, we have to really make sure that we are constantly thinking about how we make sure that we are trauma-sensitive schools to meet the needs of all of our students, all of our families, and all of our staff. It's so very important. I just want to, I'm not going to read through this slide because many of the examples that are here or the topics that are here have already been discussed. I'm just going to highlight a few so you can kind of hear and learn what that means for middle school. So in the middle school, it's a little bit, it's a little bit even more tricky because we, across the district, in many schools have larger classes but smaller physical rooms. And for example, in the Lawrence School, every middle school room is shared by other teachers and shared by classes. It's not like one teacher has their classroom and they have their kids in there all day long. We're moving kids around throughout the entire course of the day. And in fact, one of my classrooms is what is called our media room. So it is a room that was built within our library years ago because we were running out of space. So I host 16 middle school world language classes and four middle school lunches in my media room. My media room can only fit 10 desks. We can only fit 13 desks at three feet apart. So I can no longer use that room for my middle school when I bring them back full-time. So requiring time and figuring out where those 20 periods are going to land is additional work that we have to do. So that's just another example. Also, with regards to shared staff and scheduling, this has been addressed as well. But there may be close to, I mean, I think Leslie has a better, better number, but over maybe 35 or 40 staff that are shared among us in the eight schools in the middle school alone. So for example, I have, I have seven staff that are shared, two of whom teach world language. One teaches French with me and then at the Runcle School, and one teaches Spanish with me and then at the Lincoln School. And some of these teachers have been teaching remotely the whole time in order to accommodate our hybrid schedule. Now, when we bring them back, I have to work really closely with these other schools to make sure our in-person schedule will align so that the teachers can be with their students. And, and then finally, conservatory, we, we value conservatories so much, there's nothing better than thinking about how we can grow the capacity and nurture their whole child. And there are children who just love their music classes, and we want to make sure that we continue those for them, although it's going to be rather difficult in this environment. We're working very closely with Kenny Cozal, the K-12 Performing Arts Coordinator, to see if we can hold conservatory like we typically do. We're not sure if we're going to be able to, just to give you an example, at Lawrence alone, in my six through eight conservatory classes, I have 11 groupings of conservatory. One that has 70 members in our band. So trying to figure out where to put that group is proving to be very challenging. But we're working closely with Kenny to figure out if we can offer those traditional and beloved conservatory classes, what can we do just for the last two months of school to still allow them to have some musical experiences knowing that we're going to go, you know, fully back to conservatory next year? So those are just like many of the moving parts that we're trying to figure out for the middle school as we work on and, and plan on bringing back our grades two through five on March 29th. So thank you very much to listening to all the principals, and I think Asa wants to share another item. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm mute. Somebody had to be called out for being unmuted, right? I'll take it. So on slide eight, I was really remiss. I forgot students, and I feel bad about that. So I mean, I have to say that listening to students has to be part of these complex conversations. And I saw that in the chat, and I'm thankful for Rebecca for bringing that up and reminding me that I was remiss and, and forgetting to add that here. Students are not passive in this. We've had times, certainly at Heath School, where we've asked students what they'd like to do, and what we thought they'd like to do was the polar opposite of what we, what they actually wanted to do. And so we really do need to be mindful to really listen to our students. Our middle school students in particular are definitely not passive, and we want to be able to afford them the space and the voice to let us know how they're feeling about these humongous changes. I think we assume that they're excited to come back to school full-time. I'm the parent of an eighth grader, and I know that she's like, I'm not that excited to come back to school for full-time. I'm nervous. She doesn't go to Brookline, but I do think she's a typical eighth grader in many ways. And so we need to be able to listen very closely and then to help smooth the rails for them. So I'm thankful for that, for that in the chat, and I definitely want to add that to the presentation.
And if I could just jump in, you know, I know the question of the day is, when are we bringing six to eight back? So I want to address that and just say that, you know, we have really been focused on
So I want to address that and just say that, you know, we have really been focused on two to five. First, first grade, now two to five. And so we will be taking time at next week's weekly principal meeting with senior leadership, with Dr. Marini and the central office team, to really talk about what is manageable, what makes sense, so that we give people a really authentic date. And we will be back in touch soon with that. But I did just want to take some time to address that, and I know that's the elephant in the room. But we are thinking about that. We know people need to know that, and we are hoping to get that date to folks.
So Jim, I'm sorry, it's Suzanne. Apparently, there was a technical difficulty in the first, like, three slides. Robin, is that the case? Do people not hear or do they not see? Or what, what is it that we missed?
I think the sound was in and out.
The sound, but they saw that, but they did see the, the slides?
Yes.
Okay, so I, so I think we're okay then because the slides, I know we had the commentary, but the slides pretty much explain what the messages were. So I, I think we will go forward from there. Okay, Jim?
I just want to say thank you to the principals. I thought that was a very comprehensive thought, felt presentation that covered all the bases. And Asa, thank you for that slide on communication. Because it reminds me, even though you have it in there a little bit, that we are also working directly with the BEU, part of the MOA, to, to learn about and address the issues that you raised and what it takes to open school in a safe way with reduced distance. We're working together with the union to address those issues. That, that's part of this package as well. So I don't know whether anybody has questions. I have one more thing after the principals finish. And, but if, if, if a school committee member has a question, that's fine. But otherwise, it's been a long day for principals, and it would be, it would be good if we can allow them to get some rest before they end up this week.
So let's, let's do some questions. If the principals could hang in there for another ten or fifteen minutes, that would be great. I see Helen. Helen, go ahead. You've got the first one.
Thank you. I, I will, first of all, want to thank everybody for taking your time to come and help us to understand all the issues that you guys are dealing with. And I want to thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing this whole year. I mean, I know it's, it's been incredibly difficult. There's no doubt about this. And the school, I myself, and I think I speak for the whole school committee, truly appreciate it. I just wanted to, to let you know that we're gonna be having a capital subcommittee meeting next week, probably on Wednesday. And if there are things that can make life easier, you know, and I don't know what those things might be. Obviously, the desks you need, we know about that and the barriers. But there may be other little things, maybe microphones for teachers who have difficulty, you know, talking through a mask or something like that. If you could let probably Matt know so he can bring them up at our meeting, that would be really great because we'd like to try and help as much as we can. And, but we need to know what it is, you know, because we can't imagine what some of the, the issues are. You may, you know, teachers may be helpful also in telling you some of the things that, that make life easier. I don't know if the owls have worked. And does that help any with any of the conservatory stuff or any of the other things? Just questions.
Thank you, Helen. Who else has a comment or question? Barbara?
You're on mute, but there you go.
I, I simply want to thank all of the principals for doing this. I think it's very easy to say, as we all do from time to time, let's just get, get these children back in school, as if it is as simple as getting these children back to school in a normal September. And it isn't. It's so incredibly difficult because of the constraints of distancing and so forth. And I think, as I listened, I think people are doing an amazing job. And I hope that everyone who is listening, I'm not particularly talking about the school committee. I'm talking about the wider community, understands that this is not simple. It is not easy, and it takes lots and lots of time for teachers and for, for administration, well beyond the normal preparation that also takes a lot of time that teachers have to do. So I would like to thank all of the principals for what they are doing and the teachers as well, because this is the only way, of course, that it will work to get kids back. And while that is hugely important, you can't do it unless you do the kind of planning. You can't do it in any way that's safe unless you do the kind of planning that everyone seems to be doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Dimitri?
I wanted to say also thank you to all the principals, and I really appreciated hearing all the different challenges. I was wondering if you could, if you all could speak to, or one of you could speak to, in addition to bringing students back, what kind of curricular experience are we having or are we, are you preparing to talk about COVID and, and addressing the social emotional need of students? Especially when I'm thinking about bringing back the older kids, will there be time, space in the, in class to talk about having to be away from one another for a year, talking about the pandemic? Just, I'm trying to get an understanding of the, how do we address the social and emotional need?
Well, I mean, I can say, I know that we've been talking about it all year, right? This is, this is the culture that we're breathing right now, right? But I think to answer your specific question of what specific things might we be employing, restorative circles, right? We've done extraordinarily careful planning around who's in what cohort already. But, you know, having these opportunities to not do content, just do culture in our classrooms at all grade levels. What does it mean? What are the routines now? How do we move in the same space? How do we greet each other in the mornings? How do we put on and off our snow pants? I mean, we've been, when everybody's in the hallway at the same time, how do we move through the classroom? So I think routines, redoing the routines, reminders, but the restorative circles work. Looking through things through a social justice lens, our, our kids are really very passionate about social justice work and do see COVID and school closures and school reopenings as social justice work. Recognizing we have a significant anxiety and depression in our midst currently, whether they're at home or back and forth between home and school, or four days in per week. And so we need to have everybody, you know, recognize and understand the, the, the many different places where each of us is on the spectrum right now and have a culture of caring. And that has to be a priority that will work, continue to nurture. That won't be new work. It'll just be different because we'll be doing it with more people in a different way.
And I'd just like to give a shout out to our guidance counselors. I feel really blessed to work in a system that values guidance counselors and staffs them, you know, staffs our, staffs our schools appropriately. I know it's not just the Pierce team, but I know that all the guidance counselors have been working overtime. They really know students well, and they're making mid-course corrections where we need to when we have students that are really struggling. I also know that every school is doing something specific around addressing socially emotional learning. So Monica talked about being a trauma-sensitive school. Shout out to the BEF. They supported Pierce with getting Jessica Minahan to come to Pierce on the PD day. And she talked to the staff about how to support young people with anxiety, you know, really enhancing their mental health. And we got really positive feedback from the staff on that professional development. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, we've been talking a lot as a staff about really taking the time to rebuild community when all of the students return. So yes, we want to jump into the curriculum, and we certainly have a focus on learning. But also, these children haven't been together for over a year, many of them. And so we're gonna need to slow things down and take some time to focus on rules, routines, how we do things in a COVID era. And so, you know, that's important, and that's work that is happening as well as, you know, as the learning is happening. So, oh, one more thing. The work that Maria Lataz, the guidance team, Casey's team, has done with Panorama and the social emotional screeners has been great data to have. It's really interesting when we hear or we know about a student that's struggling to then go back and look at the screener. And almost a hundred percent of the time, the screener is predictive of, of issues. And so that has been great. Panorama has a lot of great resources. So we're thinking about this in a lot of different ways, but that's certainly a way that the, the district's been incredibly supportive.
I just want to, I just want to echo that, the, the two surveys that have been administered to students in grades three through eight, and I believe at the high school, but definitely three through eight, has been really useful for us as well, along with the other schools. And our clinical team actually just received the results of the second survey last week. And we're really combing through those to identify patterns and compare them to the responses that we got from our children and families in November. And then we're, you know, taking that information and identifying what action steps we need to move forward with as it pertains to lunch groups, one-on-one counseling, whatever it may be. And then in addition to that, you know, every, every principal has shared that all of our teachers are preparing the classes in their current hybrid models, but what it's gonna be like when they come back and when they're all together. And, and you know, what we're looking forward to, and we even have a number of students that we're bringing back a week or a couple of days early so that they can experience the other cohort that they have not been in the building with, because we know some of them have some serious sensory issues. So we're gonna bring them in a couple of days early to give them a sense of what it's going to be like to be with a full class again. So from the macro of looking at the whole school and grade levels in classes, we're actually, actually identifying our individual students that are gonna need even additional supports to make sure that they have successful transitions as well.
And I just wanted to give just a snippet of, when you talk about having all the students come back and all the good news that we've shared tonight. Our first grade teachers also talked about how different it was to have fourteen versus seven, or, you know, twelve versus six. And when we were at six or five, kids were six feet apart, but they could move around the classroom. And they might be able to check in on a neighbor for two minutes during snack or lunch or with their masks on. But when you put fifteen in a classroom, they felt, the teachers felt like they really couldn't get out of their seats and walk around. So it felt very different. So it's not the same school that kids are used to, even though they're really excited to be there. It looks really different in this setting. And just to put things in real-world perspective, just in the time that we've been in this meeting, I've received three emails from parents of middle school students who are worried, really worried about their kids' mental health and want them to come back four days a week. And we're making these decisions every single day about can we bring back another student? And it's really hard because, because we're still trying to keep six feet of distance, and we can't take every single student. And as a, as a parent of three, you know, teenagers, it's heart-wrenching to not be able to pull all these kids back. But it's getting worse every day.
Other committee members? Any comments? Susan?
Thank you. I just, I also want to say thank you to this group. You know, before this pandemic, principals had to be staff leaders and community leaders and parent leaders and child leaders and pedagogical experts and whole child experts and building managers and lunch monitors and everything in between. And now it's just so much more, so much more complicated than that in terms of the remote learning, in terms of all of the different safety pieces and in terms of the scheduling. And so what I really appreciate about these slides is all of the different layers of things that have to get figured out in order for this to work. And what struck me as, as you all were talking was that I think if my math is right, six out of eight of you used to be vice principals in Brookline. And, and that's extraordinary. First of all, it's just great that, that we are a place where people want to build their careers. But it also just really speaks to the vice principal role and just appreciation to our vice principals as well, who make our buildings run and I don't know how many schedules they've built and rebuilt and rebuilt over the course of the last number of year, over the last year now. And just, I'm, I'm so grateful that each of you, especially the six of you, but all eight of you have brought that sort of with you and that mindset of just how can we make this happen into this conversation? And it's just, it's so fantastic. So we're here to help, whatever we can do. And so just, just thank you to you, and please go back and thank all of the administrative teams, the, all of the administrative assistants, all of the custodians, all of the people who really do make the, the building work, because it's such a broad group of staff. So, so just a giant thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other committee member want to say? Mariah?
Thanks. I, I do, I want to echo all of the thanks to the principals and to the team. It is so complicated. And just to also note exactly what Donna pointed out, which is that there are parents and kids who are struggling too, right? And so, and they need their kids back. And so both of the, we can hold both of these things in our hands at the same time as this grateful appreciation. I think we all do, right? Grateful appreciation for how hard this work is. And while also acknowledging that struggle too. And so I just want to make sure, sometimes we hear after these meetings, well, you said thank you, but they didn't solve it. And it's like, but that's not the way this works. It's not that you, it's one, it's one or the other, right? That there is both of these things and they're happening. I'm a parent of a seventh grader. It will be great to have her be back, and I'm, and I'm really, it was so helpful to see how you really did articulate all of these different problems because all the emails we get say something like, well, if it's conservatory, just like, don't, it's like, it's not just conservatory. Conservatory is like the little bit of the iceberg that you see maybe above the water, right? This is incredibly complicated. So, so that presentation was really helpful, and thank you for putting that out there. Is that presentation gonna be something that can get, will it be posted anywhere? Or shared in any way? Jim, can we get that somehow posted? I just think that like what was on those slides was really valuable for people to see. And they don't always sit through a full YouTube presentation to see it. So if there's a way to share that information, I think it would be really beneficial to the community.
We should be able to share. We may have to put a little something in the beginning that says that the first ten minutes is, has some technical issues.
Well, I mean, not the video. I mean, actually the slides, just so people can toggle through them. Yeah.
We can post that to the website.
I think it would be really great to do that if we could. Thanks.
The school community, it's public.
Yeah, but I don't think we got these slides in our packet.
No, that's right. You didn't.
Do you have a copy of the slides? Does someone could, Michelle, it's that you could send that to Robin perhaps, and she could post that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, because I just think they're great. It's really great information.
Good idea. Any other school committee members? Yeah, Jennifer?
I don't want to, I don't want to say too many words. Really what I want to say is thank you for the principals for coming in, sharing this information. I agree with the previous comments that it was, I think, really clear how thoughtful and how intricate the process is. And so we just thank you for the presentation, I think, was very clear in outlining what we need to do next to get more kids in and how hard it is and complicated. But I just want to say thank you again, as everyone did.
Yeah, David?
I don't want to be the low negative voice here. I'm not going to be super negative or anything. But I do think that it's going to be important to communicate to us as school committee members and to those on the select board or whoever, or to the Department of Health or whoever it is where you need some extra support so that we can try to set a date. It really is important for planning purposes and for everyone to have an understanding of when it is that we can get grade six through eight back in the buildings. And if it were, sometimes setting a deadline can actually help move things along and make other stakeholders understand the importance of making certain key decisions. I just know as an attorney that when there are no deadlines in place, nothing tends to get done. Once there's a deadline, then all of a sudden people spring into action. And that's not to cast aspersions on any of our principals or any in particular individuals, but it's just sort of a practical reality of doing work in any but it's just sort of a practical reality of doing work in any field that when you know you have a certain target, it springs everyone to work together and into, uh, action. So I just hope that we can move in that direction.
So, uh, Andy, did you want to say anything or no? It's fine.
Only to express my appreciation, um, I think for the joy and optimism that I came through in all of your remarks. I mean, there are all these difficulties, but I could also hear the, well, the joy over first grade and the optimism over what's coming next. And much appreciated.
Thank you, Andy. I have to say joy in learning is one of my favorite mantras. So I'm always looking for that. It's nice to hear that. Uh, Jim, if I could just kind of sum up, I believe, uh, second to fifth is coming back March 29th. And I believe that you may have a date for six to eight after your Monday meeting with the principals. That's what I heard.
Well, we're going to meet and we're going to review all of what we said. And, uh, and then we are going to be looking for a date. Uh, everyone knows Leslie terrific, you know, comes right out and says, that's the elephant in the room. We know that you need a date, but essentially, uh, I think what the principals are saying is we want to give you a date that works. We want to give you a date that we know we can hit. We don't want to give you a date just for a feel-good thing. We want to give you a date that we know it can work. People have so much invested in this. So yes, Suzanne, we're going to meet on Monday and one of the agenda items is really going to be, what's the date? What, what, how, what's it going to take? And, and David's comments about if we need additional resources, let's ask for them so that we can, uh, we could, we can move that forward. So that's going to be our challenge on, on Monday. And if we come up with a date, but then we really have to let, uh, the principals do the work that needs to be done while they're running school, which is a challenge and a half. So, yeah.
And so I think I would just also like to say to Donna's point for the, the texts and emails she's getting that if we have families out there who have children that they are truly worried about, I, I don't mean, you know, this is an inconvenience. I mean, that they are very concerned about, certainly their mental health, trauma, that they should contact against their schools. And they will contact guidance counselors who will be in touch with the families. And, um, we just know we have to take care of our children. Whether they're in school or at home, we need to take care of them. So, um, if that's okay, principals, I, I'm sending them to your offices anyway. Um, but I do think that's really important that even when children are not in school, they're still, still our children and we are concerned about them and we're concerned about their health and safety. So that's a commitment I think we can make to our families. So.
Very good.
And I think that's, that's it for now. If that's okay, should we let them go home?
Oh, I think so. They could use a night's rest. Tomorrow's going to come before you know it.
I know, and Monday's the good meeting.
Thank you very much, principals.
Thank you all for being here, for sharing your time and your, and your thoughts and all your good work. Thank you so very much.
Camera, shut off your computer and whatever you do that refreshes yourself. Can, can I stay with the principal's report for a little bit longer, Suzanne?
Sure. And then we're going to go to public comment. So we are a little bit late on public comments.
I just want to say the one thing that I wanted to circle back to, which, which was alluded to here in, in the presentation as well, is pool testing. You know, we've begun to do the pool testing and, uh, also the, uh, the asymptomatic testing, the, uh, the, the empathy testing. There's some news on that front as well. But I'm going to ask, uh, Susan Wolf Ditka if she can report out on that because she has some really deep information on it that she can share.
Sure, I'm happy to, I'm happy to. Um, so that, a few headlines. Um, then I'll give you a little bit more information, but the headlines are first that the pool testing began this week for teachers. Um, and it will begin for students next week, continue with teachers and begin for students next week. So, um, I'll give a little bit more information just because you might start getting questions um, when that email goes out to parents. Um, but in this, our first week, um, we had roughly 400 teachers participate. There were two positives, um, which is a 0.5 positivity rate. Um, and I can give you more information about that, but, um, they're very, um, it's still very, very encouraging. Um, and parents will hear more next, uh, tomorrow about next week's testing for the, for the students. But let me just sort of give a couple of overview comments here. I mean, first, just as you know, you know, it's been such a high priority for us to get, um, stand up this, uh, this testing program for both teachers and students. And so before the Commonwealth even decided on their program, we did our voluntary individual testing program. And that's when an individual, um, would swab and they would get an individual result. Um, and it was very sort of simple, uh, but it was also quite expensive. Um, we did three rounds of it just to make sure that, you know, that our, our buildings were in good shape and that, and that if there were any hotspots, we could, we could nail them down. Um, and again, we had very, very low positivity results in that first three rounds. It was 1,800 tests and I think there were three positives. So again, it gave us confidence to move to the Commonwealth's program. Um, but the Commonwealth's program is, is different and it's a pooled program. And the reason, we, we've talked about it here a little bit, but I think just as parents start to ask, the, the main difference is that as one person, you know, does their own swab, it gets pooled with a number of other swabs and then that whole batch gets tested. And so if that pool is positive, then the individual needs to be retested. And so what they'll need to do is commit to the fact that if they're positive, they will need to retest. Um, I mean, the good news about the, the Commonwealth's program is that, um, it was only supposed to be for a few weeks through March 28th. Um, you may have heard that, um, Desi has now extended that through April 18th. Um, and, and it is a subsidized program and that's great and we're taking advantage of it. Um, but it's not free in the sense that we still incur operational and staff costs to run it. Um, and it's quite, um, difficult in terms of its logistics. And so if you see one of our nurses, please say thank you. Um, it is just, it's, it's a tough program too. But the Commonwealth's program is a tough one to implement. Um, so we're taking a very hard look at sort of participation after this initial period. Um, I mean, the second part about this particular way that pool testing is done is that for that time in between the fact that you find out you're in a positive pool and then you go get a test, it's pretty anxiety producing. Um, so we had a few positive pools, um, this week and it was, you know, that we heard that it was stressful to be in that positive pool until you found out that you were not the positive. Um, there are other ways of doing pool testing, meaning, um, you, you essentially do it in a way where you, they can figure out without you having to do a retest. They can, they can figure out who the positive was. Um, and so we were looking at that actually before the Commonwealth's program. Um, and, um, it's actually quite, um, cost effective as well. Um, so there are other options that we're looking at, but just if, if the, the logistics are complicated and we understand that. And so if you, if you hear that, um, it is because we're, we're kind of going with the Commonwealth's program for now. Um, just to remind people, it's not that sort of awful brain tickler swab that people are asking about their kids. Um, it's a, it's a shallow swab. Um, and we typically get the results in, you know, 24 hours, sometimes 48 hours. Um, and, um, we'll be able to sort of do it at much larger numbers. So, um, if you recall, we, we had promised, um, last month that we would be doing all staff, uh, all interested student-facing staff this week. Next week, we would do all student-facing staff who are interested plus grades nine through 12. The week after, we'll add in grade six through eight. Um, and then after that, we'll, um, add in the rest of the, the students. And after that, we're going to sort of, again, pause and kind of see what our numbers are looking like um, and think a little bit about what the best way to do this is, um, given the logistical complexity of, of the state's program. Um, the only other thing I'll say is that, you know, we have had this very small team of parent volunteers, um, Nira Pollock, Jenny Tam, Grady Klaus, who have been working nights and weekends to try to make this happen. Um, Tricia and her team, Deb and Betty and all, are working incredibly, incredibly hard to do this. Um, and so to the extent that you see them, please, um, thank them. Please send them an email and just let them know how appreciated it is because, um, they're working incredibly hard. Um, I'm not going to go into the vaccine conversation right now, but just if there are questions on, on the swabbing piece, again, since, since we're going to get this from, uh, parents, I think the email is going to go out tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, um, about, about the high school students being tested next week. Um, and so if there are any other questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
Jennifer?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that I know the answers to these, but I just want to clarify, Susan. So when we do the pooled testing, is the pickup and drop-off of the, like, um, kits and the swabs going to be at a, at a testing site or at each individual school? Like, are the nurses handling that?
The, so the, the, it's observed and so it's not like a student will do it at home and bring it to school. Um, the idea is that the nurses will be, are involved in that, yes.
But it's not one central site. It's each, the students in each school and the staff of the schools will do that through the school. So they don't need to travel anywhere to do that. It's right in their homeschool.
For the first round, yes. Um, it, for the, there's something called the reflex test, which is if you're in a positive pool, um, and there's a reflex test, there is a centralized site to go to. Um, and so there is a little bit of travel on that, on that side. But, but that's for a very, very small fraction of, of people.
And the other question I had was on the retest. Um, I think you mentioned it is possible to retest the individual swabs versus retesting the person, right? And so you're saying we're considering that or?
So it is definitely possible to do that. There were vendors that we were talking about before the Commonwealth's program got started. There were vendors that we were talking about doing that with. However, um, the Commonwealth's program is quite restrictive. The, the people that they matched us with do not do that. And so the people that we were matched with for this free program, subsidized program, um, that's not one of the options. Uh, so again, that's one of the reasons why we're going to kind of look at that. We're going to, we're going to get through this round and then we'll, we'll pause and, and look at it again and see, um, if this is still the best option for us. There's sort of a lot of analysis that goes into it.
How many rounds? How many rounds? When you say this round, you mean four weeks?
Yeah, four weeks. Sorry. So, so it'll be this week, which is, um, was teachers on Tuesday. Next week, which is, um, student-facing staff plus high school and then student-facing staff, high school and middle school, and then student-facing staff and all students for last week.
Thank you.
Helen, did you have a question?
Your work on that. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so if there is a positive case and there's a pool, where do those people go to get tested again?
So it's been a little bit complicated.
What happens with the cost of that?
Um, so the, the binax, it's, it's, it's a, it's a binax and it's a, it's a, it's a rapid test. So it's like a 15-minute turnaround test, um, which is supposed to be, um, to give you the answer one way or the other. Sometimes there are glitches. Um, but at any rate, um, the idea is that you get that result very quickly. Um, and you, and so, so we're, we're providing, we're providing that.
Oh, I see. So within the school, so you don't? So there's not that lifetime. Once your group tests positive, you can find out pretty quickly.
Yeah. So I think the idea is that you find out within 24 to 48 hours. But when you find out, you essentially are committing to going back to get the reflex test within 24 hours or the next day. Um, so for example, you know, if a testing is done on Tuesdays, our, our ideal would be that Wednesday afternoon, when we're, when, when there's a half a day, is when we would kind of go back to do the, the reflex test, um, that we'd be able to do it that quickly. So that's sort of, uh, that's the design of it. We'll see how, um, how well the turnaround times, the, the promised turnaround times, uh, play out, but that's the design.
And one other question, is empathy still working in Brookline or is that over?
So empathy, um, is still, um, working at the moment. Um, but as, uh, you know, number one, testing, um, people coming in, how, the numbers of people coming in have gone down. Um, and a lot of people are starting to turn their attention to the vaccines. Um, and so, uh, and we're, I believe we're, you know, past budget on that. So, um, the empathy site is going to be, is winding down. It's, I, I think it's still operating like to, tomorrow, if that's your question, but it's, it is winding down.
Okay, thank you.
So I, thank you, Susan. Thank you for all that work you're doing and for the update on that. Uh, Jim, I, what, what were we going to talk about? I would like to start public comment. Do you have a final comment to this or do you have another topic?
I just want to give a quick update on the high school.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the high school, very, very, very quickly, the, the, uh, the high school administration, Anthony and Hal sent out their, their, uh, their, their survey as they promised to the 10th through 12th graders. Uh, they sent out 1,500 of them, received 500 responses. Of the 500 responses, uh, 300, uh, students, families, uh, said that they would like to return to, uh, in-person learning four days a week. And, uh, so they are going to do that and they're, they're going to be six foot distance and Anthony's working, uh, to, to get the room set up to accommodate that because they have the space. Uh, and the others was, the other 200 said they were comfortable in hy- in hybrid and remote and they wanted to continue with that. Uh, they are planning to send out to the ninth grade class, uh, which they're going to do this week. And, uh, they're concerned because the, on those numbers as they return, because they, the, the rooms in OLS are not large and they're concerned about having to shrink the distance. And so once he gets those numbers back, then we'll need to proceed with that in the same way we are with the others. But, so that's the update.
Thank you for that. Um, I'm going to go to public comment now. Um, I'm sorry that we're a little late on public comment. That's always happens when we don't have you right up front, but we thought it was important that you heard on the, um, two to five and the six to eight presentation before we had public comment. So first person up is Kevin McKenzie and then Laura Baines Walsh will be next.
Hi, my name is Kevin McKenzie and I am a paraprofessional at the Lauren School. I am once again urging you to give every student in this district the opportunity to share their thoughts directly with their educators, building leadership and district leadership. Students are the most important stakeholder in this process and they must be included in conversations about them. It is essential that we, as trusted adults in our lives, are able to support them through what will be a difficult and challenging transition for many students. No one denies that there is a serious pervasive pandemic-induced mental health crisis facing, facing students. As someone who spends seven hours a day with the same group of students all day, every day of the school year, I have seen and heard firsthand how this impacts my students. However, students struggle while attending school in person during a pandemic. Returning students to full-time in-person instruction is not a magic cure-all. For some students, it is going to intensify their fears and anxieties. I know this because they have shared this with me. If we are going to address the mental health crisis facing our students, we need the resources. Cutting staff or putting a hiring freeze in place will not benefit students or help solve this crisis. As an educator, I may wear a lot of hats, but I can never be a social worker. I also feel that it's pertinent, pertinent to remind you that many Brookline educators are also struggling with the trauma of this moment. Our students are not alone. Many of us face the struggle alongside them. As someone whose students look up to and rely on, there is a lot of pressure to keep quiet about these struggles. Each and every day I have walked into my school buildings since September, I've put a mask over my face. The farther we get into the school year, the heavier it becomes. As we continue through this pandemic under intense pressure, it becomes harder and harder for me to mask the impact it is having on my own mental health. I am not a superhero. I am a 24-year-old who is trying to get by and help his students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Laura, you're up and then Paige Scott Reed.
Hi, my name is Laura Baines Walsh and I am a parent of two wonderful students at the Baker School. I would like to thank you for letting me speak. I'd also like to give so much props to my children's teachers. They've put forth a Herculean task this year. And hearing Mr. Lewis today talking about how excited he is to welcome back the kids made my heart sing. But I am also a high school teacher, uh, who's a private school, high school teacher. So I have been fully in person since September. And I know how, one, scary it is to go back, but I also know how important it is. I've seen firsthand, especially for the freshmen, how important it is to be in school with their friends and to have the support of in-person learning. While I was overjoyed to hear the plans for my own children, I am worried about the sixth through ninth graders who so far, sorry, that's my son, uh, do not have a return date. I worry about the freshmen who have made a transition to high school, but have had to do it again in this weird hybrid fashion. They need a date. The sixth graders need a date. And so I would like to implore that we get a hard and fast date for them to go back. Cause like, uh, Dave Pearlman said, without a deadline, nothing gets done. And as a teacher, I know the importance of a deadline. So let's put our children's first. Let's have a mindset of we can do this. We can accomplish this. We are smart people. We can get this done. That should be our North Star. So thank you for all of the work that you've done. I, I know what a hard task this is. I know how scary it is and I also know how important it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Paige, you're up and then Eileen O'Hara Bruin.
Hi, this is Paige Scott Reed. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Paige. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm a parent of, uh, two children in the Brookline Public Schools and one graduate. Um, I, I, I'm tired of being at school committee as much as, I'm sure you're tired of hearing me, but this is so important. I want to thank you for all your hard work, all of you. School committee, administrators, principals, teachers. I know it has been incredibly difficult. Schools are complicated places. They've always been complicated. They've always been complicated places and they will always be complicated places. But I'd like to try and simplify the problem so we can focus on what is most important, that kids belong in school. I have three key requests, they're the same requests as last week. Please set three feet as the minimum distance in all public school buildings. That's incredibly important under the MOA from a legal perspective. Even if many classrooms are not at the three feet minimum, they're at greater distance than that. Please set that as the minimum. Please bring all hybrid grades full-time in person for five days by April. Please ensure that every student in the Brookline Public School system will receive 850 hours of structured learning time if they're at the elementary school level and 935 at the high school level. That's a requirement and I really, really ask it be a commitment. I have not heard once that it will be. And finally, we need a date. We have been waiting and waiting and waiting for a date. Sixth through eighth graders deserve to know when they'll be able to come back to school. Principals deserve to be able to plan for a particular date. Parents deserve to be able to plan for a particular date and teachers deserve to be able to. I have so much trust in our principals and our teachers and all of the support staff. If you told them that these kids were coming back tomorrow, they would make it happen. So please, let's make it happen. And finally, a couple of small points. I understand that conservatory is a big scheduling problem. Let's have conservatory be asynchronous. There are things we can give up in the pandemic and unfortunately, that's one of them. Shared staff. It's important that our kids get back to school full-time in person. If they have to have less time with shared staff, fine, I can accept that, less world language. And finally, cohorting. It is not necessary for the cohorting rules to be so strict that kids can't be back full-time in person. Sixth through eighth graders deserve to be back, even if the cohorting rules have to be relaxed. And I just want to end by saying once again, thank you. We would not be here without your expertise and we won't get to the finish line without your expertise. But we have to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Eileen is next and then Nancy Rowe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Eileen. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for your time tonight. I'm a parent of fifth and seventh graders at the Lincoln School and a working parent who's worked from home since before the pandemic. I'm not a first responder and expert in medical care, air filtration or education. I have simply been trying to help my kids through a fully remote and then hybrid learning model for nearly a year. As you know, it's hard. I'm not an educator, but I'm trying my best to fill gaps in their school days. Middle schoolers need the support and guidance from those expert educators that isn't realized from two days a week in school plus two days of asynchronous learn. For example, my middle schooler hasn't had synchronous art class in four months and his entire Zoom class had turned off their video cameras. He regularly tells me it just doesn't work. Teachers are forced into double duty, planning both in-person and asynchronous lessons every single week. It's just not working. In-school days are a completely different story. I am so thrilled this team is actively figuring it out. Please set a date and bring back the middle schoolers into the school as soon as possible. I have another two people in the household that might want to say something. Go ahead.
Um, I, it is much harder to work from home without the guidance of my teachers. And it would be much better if we could get back to doing that soon.
Hello, I am the grandmother of a fifth grader and a seventh grader. And I have been particularly concerned about the psychological and emotional health of our second grade young man. For many, many days, he would just hole up in his room by himself and I was very afraid for his mental health. Now that he's in school two days a week, he is much better. Please open the schools for the sake of our children and grandchildren.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Eileen. And Nancy, you're our last speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Nancy. Go ahead.
Terrific, thank you. So Nancy Rowe, I'm a parent of a 10th grader, an 11th grader and then a 5th grader. And let me just say, I'm so happy and appreciative to hear about all the planning and the hard work that's happening in our schools. Hearing from the principals was heartening. Our students, they're incapable hands and I feel confident that all the barriers to in-person learning that are identified will be successfully managed. We have a smart group of principals and a capable group of teachers. I also want to say that I'm grateful to every Brookline teacher who had to pivot on a dime to reimagine what schooling was in spring. And I'm grateful for every teacher who shows up every day and puts an hour upon hour of work to teach our kids. Let me be perfectly clear that in no way is a request for more in-person learning a slight or an insult or an attack on our amazing teachers. This is not an us versus them situation. This is a parent-child-teacher school committee versus the fallout from a pandemic, whether that fallout is physical illness, mental illness or academic loss. I again want to urge the school committee to follow the best science we have to date and reduce distancing to allow in-person learning for those who want and need it. Every day without full in-person education and support puts our kids at greater and greater risk for mental health issues. The issues to be addressed, this needs to be addressed with urgency. Thanks to Anthony and Darby for their email resources today. That's a great place to start. And we can't forget our sixth and ninth, sixth through ninth graders. They need to be back ASAP. As soon as negotiations with the BEU are completed, March 22nd, that's great, let's do it. We need that date hard and fast. After April break is too long to wait. And finally, I hope that we can return to students all of the lost learning that has been taken from them. Wednesday half-days and the two additional half-days need to be given back to our children, especially if we want to try to recoup some of the educational losses that just continue to pile up. So thank you so much for listening tonight.
Thank you, Nancy. And that concludes our public comment for the evening. So I think Jim and Mary Ellen, you're up next on a 2022 budget.
Mary Ellen, can you? Well, Mary Ellen's getting at this as an update for where for for where we are at this point and take you through this. Okay, Mary Ellen, can we go to the next slide? Great. I just have this here in every slide to remind ourselves that all we do and the decisions we make should always have the the students at the center of our decisions. And it's important that we keep that in place. That's our mission, that's what we're about. Okay, Mary Ellen. So this is the revenue update. You see the ones that are in gray, the revenues that we have been talking about, the town's allocation, the S R fund, circuit breaker, material fees. But we're looking at with some level of confidence in the American Rescue Plan out of the federal government and hoping that we receive funds from that process. We there's a level of optimism about that, but we haven't received them yet. And the GIC, the insurance that the town ascribes to, the those rates will be coming out and we're somewhat optimistic that the increased rates won't be as much as was anticipated, which should free up some funds and we don't know what that is yet, but we're still looking at those two as revenue sources. Okay? So this is the budget update for now. We have gone through the budget and looking at areas where we can find reductions. And we're looking at at reductions because for a number of reasons. One is the reduced enrollment and two, looking at what's happening in the schools. So going through for this iteration here, we're looking at the the ECS program is not really functioning. It doesn't have a coordinator this year and that program needs to be suspended and reimagined. It wasn't, it wasn't functioning this year. So we're we're going to take it out of the budget going forward with the idea that it will be, it'll be worked on and then proposed for next year to enter back into the budget so it can serve its its useful purpose of in terms of enrichment. And that needs work. So rather than just having it floundered, we're going to suspend it, develop the program and then put it back in for next year. Literacy coaches, we're going to remove three literacy coaches from the budget. That leaves one coach in each school. The literacy coach program still is in existence and strongly. And there's one coach in in each school as well as a district-wide coach. Inclusion facilitators, there are two FTEs that were not filled this year and we still met the needs of students. So those two positions will not be funded. They will be removed from the budget. And the building, public buildings division, this is the salaries that Mary Ellen can, actually, she's been working with this very closely and she can describe what this is. But in there is already a salary account and we're using contracted services rather than being able to hire tradespeople to do the work that needs to be done. And this is a reduction of half of the salary that was requested, which means that there is some salary piece in there to do some hiring. And we're encouraging that those that happen before we continue to fund it at a higher level. Mary Ellen, anything you want to say about that?
No, other than capital subcommittee has been working with Charlie Simmons, the director of public buildings, around this issue of hiring HVAC technicians and the pay rates. So and also advisory is also interested in this topic as well. And it will be ongoing discussion around the maintenance and supportive maintenance of town and school buildings, particularly around HVAC staff that we need.
Okay, so as a result of this work, there's approximately $1.2 million that we can reduce our request, which I think is is necessary, given that the the funding, the funding sources that we have at this point that we know of do not meet the needs that we have. The school committee was very positive in voting to fund the budget that we need to run the system. And so we're, we need to have a budget that we know is necessary to to fund it. We're not, we are not removing program in the base program, the world language, art, music, PE, those programs, we're not touching at this point. And yet we know that if if we don't get sufficient funding, we may have to revisit, we will have to revisit the cuts. And if that happens, we will be into significant program. All right, Mary Ellen. Okay, so next steps to to enclose the gap. You see what has a strikeout in it, there's a whole of class size to the average of 19 in the K8 schools. Very important that we maintain that. The it's important to repeat that with the reduction of enrollment going into next year, we were right sizing, so to speak, our sections to have an average of 19 students. So we were able to remove a number of teachers positions from the program for budgetary reasons. So that's been done. We are continuing to do an ongoing analysis of the high school to identify any potential reductions. And the high school has been working very hard to identify some. And we don't, we don't, I don't feel as though we should move on that just yet. And with the reduced enrollment, we continue to work with principals to review all programs for efficiencies and alternate delivery models. Now, we do look at math, literacy intervention, paraprofessional positions, et cetera, doing that because there's the the gap still appears to be significant. And while we're getting there little by little, this is here because we may have to revisit some of some of these areas, the coordinators, the principals. Hats off to them. They've been working to to review programs and find areas of efficiency. And so and they will continue to do that as we move forward. Okay, Mary Ellen? So the next steps, we're waiting with relative optimism, but we don't know the magnitude for the federal government and state funding resources. And we continue working with the town to identify other funding sources, GIC, for example. And this with the strikeout is we identified areas of reduction from March 4th, which I explained a couple of slides ago for this school committee meeting. And go ahead, Mary Ellen. So we have on March 10th, we have an advisory meeting with the school committee subcommittee on finance on March 10th next week. And we'll have the next budget update on the 18th. And on the 18th, at that point, we will probably have a more expanded budget presentation. The budget's always available to be viewed on on the website that you can see there. And in March, we're going to have the program budgets and impact statements on Open Gov, which is available for anyone to visit and and to look through all the budgets and the the impact statements that go along with with the program.
And just want to add, I just want to add to that, Jim, is that people will be able to access Open Gov when we make it live from the website that's on this slide. So if you bookmark this site page, you'll be able, and it may have changed to say Budget Central, but you will be able to get all of our budget information from that page.
Okay. So 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 that's that's the sense. That's our budget update. We made some reductions and and we're hopeful that we're going to get additional resources for the for the school system. And if we do, then that will be great. But if we don't, then the next round of reductions are going to, they will be impacting the the core programs that we have here. So we're at a pretty critical point right now. All right. And if anybody has any questions, that'd be fine. Mariah? Sorry, Suzanne, I shouldn't do that. Sorry.
Can I go, Suzanne? Is that okay?
Right ahead, Mariah.
Okay. Jim, I just wanted to ask a little or clarify maybe a little bit about the program reductions you mentioned. The this, just two things that the staff in question have already been notified, correct? And do I just talk a little bit about that for one moment?
That's sure. All the staff have been notified in in some cases notified that there's going to be a reduction in this area, but we don't know who is going to be impacted by that. And and to a large extent, people will not lose their jobs because they are professional status and will and they'll be absorbed into the system through attrition and and hopefully to all through attrition. So we're not looking at, in those particular areas, we're not looking at people losing their jobs. We're looking at people moving into different positions.
And then just one other thing is just to clarify that the literacy positions you were talking about are literacy coaches and not literacy specialists.
That's right. The literacy and specialists are all remain as with math. Math has one coach and but but the math intervention specialists. and, but, but the math intervention specialists are intact, so the literacy intervention specialists, those are intact as well.
Because I think the public sometimes gets confused about literacy specialists who are student-facing as opposed to literacy coaches who are working with teachers, so this is not staff who are interacting with students in a year where we would probably need a lot of, we would, we would expect to need those additional supports.
Exactly, it, it's, it still is a reduction though, you know, ea, each building will still have a coach, but it, it's still, it is, it still is a reduction in the sense of the level of services those coaches can provide for the teachers, but it's not direct service to the students for the most part. Some of the coaches go into the classroom and provide that service, but we're trying to stay away from the direct service to students, particularly in the era of this pandemic. That's, that's, that's an excellent question.
Thank you.
Yeah, Helen?
Sorry, I was on mute. I, I don't think I heard it, do we know when we will get the GIC number?
Mary Ellen, do you have a sense of that?
No. I know GSE Board was meeting this week, there was some rate setting happening this week. We typically receive it the end, to end of, mid to the end of March after Melissa does whatever math she does.
And were you able to figure out what every percentage or half percent on the GIC would, would mean for us now? It would be good to know that maybe for the next meeting, if we could.
Well, what Melissa did provide is that it's not gonna be much more than a few hundred thousand dollars.
Per half percent?
No, the, whatever the, whatever the adjustment is, isn't gonna be more than a few hundred thousand dollars in total. She didn't give me a percent.
Okay.
It's gonna be very small dollars.
All right, because in the past, it's been quite a bit, and I just, you know, it's interesting that it won't be more because the costs, you know, healthcare have not gone up substantially, at least not six percent.
Right, but they, I think they've been a little bit more conservative. I think the real dollars, so, that are gonna be where we start, and we start taking positions off of the account or off to, off of the burden, so to speak, so every employee position that we've had on benefits or have had to put on benefits this year is roughly about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, so every one of those positions that we're not filling next year, that's, that's that amount of money, and that will add up pretty quickly because we have added staff this year that we won't be continuing next year because of the Remote Learning Academy. So that's actually where some real money probably is, and we're trying to finalize a list for her of the people in positions that were not continuing next year due to the, because they were all on one-year contracts, all temporary hires, knew they were only hired for this year, and pulling those people off the benefits, so that's, that's that's worth spending some time on.
Exactly, and so I would be careful of, you know, talking about cuts before we have a better handle on some of those numbers, because, well, it's, I, I would like to maximize any revenues that we can get or offsets that make a difference. Also, with the monies that come from the feds or this, the state, is it for this fiscal year? Can it be carried on through next fiscal year like they did this year where they extended the time? What, and what, is it the federal fiscal year or the?
Yeah, it, so the federal money is, for example, like the 1.6 million, the SRS II, that is actually eligible to be expended through twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yes. So the federal, a lot of the federal grants have a twenty-seven month time period. The SRF II doesn't seem to quite have that long, but it's a little shorter than, than that, but so if in fact there are revenues that appear, we could potentially, you know, hold back the use of that SRF II money. If, you know, should we have a fund balance, for example, and in twenty-two, we would, we would hold those funds back. Those would be the last money, like circuit breakers, kind of the last money we spend.
Yeah.
Kind of stuff, that kind of practice, I should say, not stuff, but practice. And so the American, the, the new funds that are coming through, we have no idea, haven't heard anything about any kind of restrictions. There's a, there's some, I am part of a National School Business Administrators Group, and we're having a meeting next week, and they're talking about federal funding, and hopefully they'll have more information that I can get, gather about what the sentiments are around the use of those funds and if there are any restrictions, because we need them to replace revenue gap. So if they're restricted on new types of spending, we need to be careful about what that is to beat those, any requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Helen, anybody else have a question to? Susan?
Hi, yeah, so, um, thank you for this, and a couple, one thing that I had a question on was, there was something you said about ECS, about needing to reimagine the program, and it wasn't clear to me if there was something about the program that needed to be reimagined in general, or if it was that, given the time we're in, given the, you know, the moment we're in and, and everything that, that this position is not gonna be here for this year. I guess I was just a little, there's a budget way to think about it, but then there's also a, we, we need to redo the strategy for ECS, I wasn't quite sure which one we were saying.
I, I think it's partly budget, and partly that the program is, is, it's not in all schools, and it needs, it needs to have some, some refocus on it so that it, it's, it's purpose will, will be able to be implemented across the district. And right now, that's not where it's at, and it doesn't, didn't have a director this year, and it's, 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 it's kind of floundering. And rather than just let it, you know, flounder and become, you know, sort of ha, ha, have a, a non-productive time, let's just, let's just suspend it and put some people to, to think it through, and then bring it back in a strong way where it's embraced across the district. So it's partly budget and partly that the program needs to have a boost, and it needs to have somebody who's advocating for it in, in a department head position, or a director, fold it in, in a way that it has a directive with purpose and value and, and vision on it, and that's, that has been missing. So it's, it's time to take a break, reimagine it, and let's put it back in.
Okay, I might, I might need some more context on that, but, but I, I hear you, okay, that's helpful. Can I just ask one other question, which is there a number of other things that we had talked about, and I think I heard you say that they're gonna be in the budget narrative, but there's sort of a number of things that people have been talking about, for example, all of the BFA recommendations and all of the other kinds of, you know, changes, and if, and fully funding, fully staffing, mental health workers and, and whatnot, and so are the things that are not in the, wh, wh, when are we gonna have a conversation about the things that are not in, that we think need to be in, but, but we're putting, we're not putting in? Maybe that's, does that make sense as a question?
I, it may, but let me reframe it and see if it may, if, if what I'm saying makes sense, that let's, let's take a look at the whole budget. Let's take a look at the different areas of the budget and see what each area is trying to accomplish. Because if we're, we have discussions about in, in, increasing the social worker in the district. You may recall, a few weeks ago, we had a presentation from Casey and her whole team, and from that, there's a, and it's, it's, it's in the proposed budget that we include a number of social workers for each school for the very reasons that you're talking about, and we should have more of a, a full discussion about what's, how are those gonna be implemented in the schools? I do think that in the next time, as we have the budget, having a more full budget that you can see, that you can talk about in, in each area is very, very, very important. I agree with that completely, Susan, and we need to, I, I need to quite frankly push for that. We're, we're trying to get the, the staffing line in place so that we know specifically what's happening with positions, so that we can respectfully develop a, a list of, of positions that are not gonna be in the system, whether that's the one-year positions that are out, or there, there are people who are retiring, and there'll be, you know, there'll be, as I say, from these literacy ones, there may be attrition that can deal with that, and then there'll be positions that won't be in the system because we're losing some in the elementary school due to decreased enrollment, and we need to develop that list of, we won't do that list here in, in public in terms of any names or anything, but the list of the number of positions that won't be in the system so that we can have the, either the riffing or the bumping done in a way that is timely and, and organized and planned, so people have, it's a respectful way of treating people. We need to do that. Commensurate with doing that is having the budget that shows what, what the different areas of the budget are, how they're funded, and what they're, what they represent, and that will include the social workers, that will include the, the mental health areas that Casey will talk with, talk to. It will, it will include all those program areas and how they're being staffed and what they mean, and I think that's when you'll have that discussion, and those should be really, those should be great discussions. I look forward to those discussions. We just have to get that budget to a place that we can bring it here.
Andy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, well, to Susan's question, and maybe Jim has answered this, although I'm not quite sure I understood, like, just on how, how do we go through the budget in a bit more detail as it's being put together? I mean, at Finance Subcommittee, we had discussed this idea of having a series of hearings, each one devoted to a different area of the budget, not necessarily fully public hearings, but that, that it would be something like, not quite line by line, but, you know, area by area overview of the budget, is that still in the works?
That is, that is in the works, so the, the budget subcommittee, the, the, the Chair of the Sub-Finance Subcommittee has been working on that, so we flipped that over to the Subcommittee Chair.
Thanks, Jim. We, we, yes, is the answer, Andy, and we need to have some more of the OpenGov, we need to have the OpenGov basically built out, and Mary Ellen's working on that with her team to have those complete. And the hope was that they would be complete by this week, and it seems like it'll take a little bit more time, so I'm not scheduling them until we have the material to look at, because I don't want to reschedule. I want to schedule, and then that's it. And we've been thinking a little bit too, that the meeting, we had, there was some really great feedback that came in back from that meeting and the discussion, and so tuning the idea a little bit further, which we have a meeting a week from today, and we can talk about that a little bit more.
So, so my question actually was, I think what Susan said and what Andy said, and I'm just thinking out loud that if we have, let's say, five hundred fewer students next year than we have this year, then there, it would seem that there would be some cost savings or reductions in terms of classrooms, which then some of that money would pay off, make up for the deficit we have, but some of it could be put into either interventionist, social workers, guidance councils, some of those areas where we know we're gonna need extras next year. And so that, that's the conversation, I think you referred to, Jim, that will be a good conversation to have, but I, I do think we need to look at that, I mean, I know, we don't know exactly what those numbers will be next year, but even if half of the kids come back that are gone this year, that still leaves a good number of children that may not be back next year for whatever reason. It may take a couple of years to get them back. So. Yeah, Mariah?
Um, just to also preview something that's a little bit related to what you're talking about, Suzanne, and something that I'm hoping to present at the Advisory Committee Subcommittee next week is a, a model showing some of those staffing, sort of from the ratios perspective, and given reduced enrollment, what do we expect? And it would be both where, you know, so it would reflect, I think, sort of an all-in approach to what you're talking about, like, you know, where, how, what should our right number of staffing be? Also counting in some of the things that Susan's talking about, like social workers that we've discussed and everything else. So it's, it's something that I'm developing, and it might end up coming up at, at Advisory first if I feel like it's ready for people to look at by then, and if not, definitely at our meeting, the Finance Subcommittee meeting on, that's a week from today.
I mean, I know that five hundred number, I'm just picking it, but let's say there are five hundred fewer students, that, you know, we don't get them, you know, twenty fewer at Pearson Second Grade, it doesn't work that way. You'll have two here and three there, but still, still with the number, if a number is significant, like five hundred, we ought to be able to figure something out where we shift money around, or shift, shift teachers around, or, or something to, to give us what we need for next year, what I'm thinking.
We know that there, as a result of we reduced enrollment, that there are approximately ten FTE at the elementary, the K-8 schools, that will be taken out of the budget because there's not sufficient enrollment to support them.
So that's in addition to the one point sum, the 1.2 million or something you talked about today?
Yes.
Right, so that's another million or something?
Uh, close, eight hundred thousand or so, yeah.
Okay, okay. Barbara, then Helen?
Um, one of the things that I, I wonder about is how many students are we going to see coming in once people can travel from Europe and Asia and so forth again into the United States? And we don't know, we often have a fair number of out-of-district, out-of-country students. And the other thing I would wonder about is, we did a survey before, asking people who had taken their children out of Brookline, how many of them were coming back? Once we get school opened again, it might be smart to revisit that survey and ask the parents who were unsure, because it seems to me there were a lot of parents who were unsure whether they are coming back. I, I just, I worry a little bit when we're talking about cutting staff, that that could, that could be very problematic if things open up and life gets back to normal. So I'm just suggesting that we might want to revisit that survey and get in touch with some of those people before we do too much.
I, I appreciate that, and the, some of the administrators have asked us to do that survey too, so we will be doing another survey and asking, exactly as you've described, Barbara, we're gonna be doing another survey, yeah.
Helen, did you want to comment or ask a question? No, okay. Any other comments or questions about the budget 2022? Okay, thank you.
You're on mute, Suzanne.
Gosh, I said all these, I'm so sorry. So I think we'll move on, and thank you, Mary Ellen, that's what I said, and to Jim, and David, you're up for Policy Review.
All right, so this is a continuation of what we discussed at our last meeting about the recommendation by the Policy Subcommittee to delete the current policy we have on special services. This is based on the fact that it is now significantly outdated due to changes in state and federal law. At the last meeting, Helen had asked, why don't, why didn't we just vote it out then? And my answer was just to give people time to contact me or any of us if they had concerns about removing this policy. I can say that I'm ninety-nine percent sure that I didn't receive any feedback on this. Occasionally, there's an email that I missed, we get so many of them, but it seems that there wasn't really any opposition to this, so I would recommend that we go forward and vote to remove this policy.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Andy, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, saying none, we'll take a vote. Helen? Yes. Susan?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, David. Uh, we're going to subcommittee and we, layers and reports. Does anyone have something to report? I think we had quite a few last time, so we may not have. Jennifer?
Yes, I actually have a a small liaison piece that I'd like to bring up, although I will say we'll have a two curriculum subcommittee meetings this month. We'll be having one on March sixteenth and we'll be talking about um, summer school programming as well as work on the essential curriculum. And a small update on the um, C S T process, the child study team will also be meeting on March twenty third. Um, where we hope to invite some members of our panel to join us. Um, that is in the works, and so that is our hope. The liaison piece that I wanted to bring up. Um, has to do with um, Brookline Adult and Community Ed, and they are um. I'm pulling up the flyer right now, I'm sorry for the delay. They are having a festival of learning. And so I just wanted to sort of bring that up and make sure that our community members knew about it. They are offering some programming. Um, the week of March twenty second, and so I invite everyone, it's going to have live music and classes and lectures and. Guest appearances and all kinds of things, and so they're offering a a unique program, a little bit different, um, like a week long access pass. Uh, for seventy five dollars, um, and so you can take as many classes as you like during that time. Um, of the festival of learning and you can register at BrooklineAdultEd.org or you can call their phone numbers on the website as well.
I take it it's a fundraiser, Jennifer?
It is a fundraiser. Um, if people have been following um, Brookline Adult and Community Ed, um, it is in part a fundraiser. Thank you.
I just think it's important if we can support them.
Yes, absolutely.
And the pandemic, so.
It is a tough time, and so um, people are interested. There's a lot of courses they're offering, a lot of hard work is going into planning it. So I really want to make sure that community members know about it so they can take advantage of it. It's a very, um, I think reasonable price for quite a lot of different varied programs that they're offering. So we do want to support them, so I encourage everyone to take a look at it, see if it meets their needs.
Thank you. Uh, any other announcements, Barbara?
I just got an email from um, uh, Karen, Karen Wang today that we have received. They just came, the fifty thousand masks. That the uh, Gaussian School has sent to us, so they will be being delivered to the schools oh, in the course of the next week. Uh, this is the second time we have received masks. There were twenty thousand masks in the last uh, shipment. There are fifty thousand this time. So they are trying to take good care of us so that we can resume the uh, China exchange next year.
And we did send a, I signed a letter yesterday, thank you, so that's on its way. Uh, Helen, oh, David, David and then Helen, I'm sorry, David was next, Helen.
Uh, just briefly, I want to alert uh, members of the public that there's going to be a policy subcommittee meeting this Monday at five o'clock. And among the discussions, we will uh, discuss some upcoming state legislation, uh, pesticide protections for Massachusetts schoolchildren. This was something that was brought to my attention by uh, Clint Richmond of the uh, Green Caucus, so we have that for uh, Monday. Then also, we're going to be discussing the wellness policy in a couple of different contexts. One is around uh, foods and and what it is that we're serving to our students and whether it's natural and if we want to make any changes there. Uh, and also health education and whether there will be a mission statement on sexual uh, education. Uh, this is something that was requested to me by the Brookline Women's Commission. Uh, and so I think these will be interesting discussions and, uh, of course, as always, the public's invited to attend.
So thank you, David. Helen?
Actually, I'm glad David went ahead of me because the pesticide one is an interesting one. I would think it would first come to capital. Where he could find out what it is we use. And what um, you know, uh, and it, there would be, Matt would be there to be able to talk about those things. Um, rather than as a policy issue yet, I mean, first to get the information and then go on if there's need for a policy.
Right.
Does.
I I did mention that to him, just one concern was government relations doesn't meet us frequently, uh, so it's more an introduction.
No, I'm not talking about government relations, the. The pesticides, if we may be doing already, what they may be asking for is what I'm trying to say. So let's find out what it is we're doing, what the legislation is at capital. And then if there's need, we can then either go to policy or have a government relations meeting.
Okay.
Mary Ellen?
Um, I just sort of back to the wellness policy. I was wondering, David, if you had thought about convening the wellness committee that the district has to. Actually do the review and the sounding board around the wellness policy. They put an incredible amount of work. Um, into that policy when it was revised when I first got here, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, and I know they would have some valuable contributions to make. Um, that probably likely um, are similar to those that are are raising the. Questions or concerns about the wellness policy, but that was a policy that came through the wellness committee. So I didn't know if you had thought about sort of conveni, having us convene that committee to. Be a, to do some pre-work on that.
There are some, a a lot of invites that are going out, so I'll continue to make those. I I certainly want the wellness committee to be involved.
Yeah, the, yes, I I, so um, do you have a uh, current list? I just, or we can work with Robin off the.
List that I found, but I'm not sure that's the most up to date.
Okay. Happy to help you with that.
And uh, Helen?
So uh, capital, um, Pierce uh, school, we've been doing some exciting stuff on educational visioning. You know, the stuff that we're really about, things we want to see happen in schools, you know, and not things that we have to deal with. Um, so uh, we've had one uh, staff and some building committee people working together with the. Educational consultant on uh. On one of the meetings, there'll be two more of those smaller uh, group meetings. There's been also one community meeting, which unfortunately wasn't as well attended as I had expected. Though we did put the, it was recorded and was put out, uh, should be put out to the. Uh, peer school uh, P T O through the newsletter so that people can watch it if they want and. Get some ideas about some of the thoughts of twenty first century learning and how that translates into buildings that are being built today. Um. I don't know, and if you wanted to add anything to what I just said about that?
Um, no, that's all right. I mean, as far as the attendance goes, I think given the format of the meeting, it was actually about right. Because people were being asked to basically type in comments at every stage, and so, you know, the amount that that the meeting could assimilate was about the amount that we were getting.
Right, it's just that in the past, when we've done these sorts of things with other school communities, when we've been in normal times. You would get a hundred people who would come to the meeting to talk about it, even at Pierce, when we were doing the the auditorium. We we would get a hundred people to come and talk about the the design, so.
I think there is going to be another meeting, right?
Well, that's just what I was going to say. So there's a second community meeting, I think it's on March eighteenth. And there will be uh, two more smaller group uh, educational visioning meetings and and the pro, the. The whole thing is moving forward is is what I was also trying to put forward. Um, and I'm trying to, we have a capital subcommittee meeting scheduled for Tuesday. However, I think we need to um. Uh, change it because two of us members can't be there, so um, Robin is putting out something to see if we can do it on Wednesday from four to. Five thirty, um, and if that's the case, that would be great. It will be meeting then, if not, maybe.
Any other uh, announcements, new business? Okay, we're going to move into executive session then. Um, I moved to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one A for the following purposes. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. By superintendent, non-alien personnel. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. With the Brookline Educators Union, B E U, Unit A, Unit B, and paraprofessionals. Uh, and Mary Ellen, do I have to do A S N E as well or no? I'll say it's school food services, Brooklyn Educational Secretary Association, and building services employees. And to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation ed co collaborative. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Also, purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, February twenty third, twenty twenty one. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, so many, thank you. Uh, so we'll vote, Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yeah.
Uh, Dimitri?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, and we will not be coming back to open session when we are done. So uh, thank you, everyone, uh, and uh, have a good evening. And I will see all of you on the other side in the executive session.